The meeting to order, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, it is time to do the official oath of office, and I know our board administrative person, assistant is going, professional is going to share that, and if Barb and Alan would go forward and for the oath of office. And there's always a photo op after, so.
Do you want to slide over a little bit more?
Oh, yeah, go over just a little bit so the pole's not sticking out of your head. Go right here. And Alan, you kind of like it. Perfect.
Right, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. I am Barb Wench, who have been duly elected to the Holman Board of Education, who have been duly elected to the Holman Board of Education. Of the school district of Holman. Of the school district of Holman. But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof. But have not entered into the duties thereof. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of Wisconsin. And the Constitution of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office. The best of my ability, so help me God. To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is roll call. Stacy, would you please call the roll, please?
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Rebecca Reber.
She is excused.
Brian Wopat.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Alan Fox.
Here.
Okay, with six of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Motion, and Chris, a second?
Sure.
Okay, motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. So, the first item of business this evening is the election, the board organization and the election of a temporary chair. The temporary chair will conduct the board officers' elections. I would entertain a motion to appoint a temporary chair for the board officers elected.
I nominate Cheryl Hancock as temporary chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to nominate Cheryl Hancock as temporary chair. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. So then, as temporary chair, I will move us on to the election of board officers. I would note that I received information from Rebecca that she chooses not to accept any officer positions this evening, and sends her regards while she's on vacation. So, the first item then, and I will go through the process a little bit, is we will accept nominations, and nominations do not require a second, but we, I will ask for nominations three times. If we have more than one nomination for an office, then we will do a secret written ballot as per our policies. If we only have one person nominated after I've asked three times, we would then entertain a motion to cast your vote, vote, I'm sorry, to, I'm trying to remember the language. Stacy, is it on there?
Cast a unanimous ballot.
Yes, to cast, close nominations and cast, that's what I was missing, to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for the person who has been nominated. So there's two different ways that we will go through this process. Any questions before we begin? Okay, so, then the first position is for the office of president. Are there any nominations for the office of president?
I nominate Cheryl Hancock.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of president?
I nominate Brian Wopat.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of president? So, having said that, and asked three times, then I would ask board members to vote on the slip of paper which Stacy handed out, and Stacy will come around and collect the votes.
Do you need to know the number of votes, or just who?
The number is okay.
Cheryl Hancock had four votes, Brian Wopat had two votes.
Okay, so Cheryl Hancock or myself would then be the successful candidate for the office of president. So then, moving on to vice president, are there any nominations for the office of vice president?
I would like to nominate Chris Lau.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of vice president? And are there any other nominations for the office of vice president? With that then, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and unanimously elect Chris Lau as vice president.
So moved.
Gary, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to elect unanimously elect Chris Lau as vice president. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, Chris. Then moving on to clerk, that position is vacant, well, it has been vacant, and as they all are, so, any nominations for the office of clerk?
I nominate Brian Wopat.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of clerk? And a third time, are there any other nominations for the office of clerk? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and unanimously elect Brian Wopat as our clerk. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jennifer, so motion's been made and seconded to unanimously elect Brian Wopat as clerk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Treasurer, again, are there any nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any?
I nominate Gary Dunlap.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? And the third time, are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and elect Gary Dunlap as our treasurer.
So moved.
Okay, Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Congratulations to the newly elected board members and those continuing on. At this time, I don't know, Chris, if you want to stay where you are, but in the future you'll be right next to me, so.
I am fine here tonight, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, congratulations.
One chair over.
Yeah, one chair over, exactly.
I'm already plugged in here, I'm good.
So then the next item is designation of special depositories. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, so each year, we annually come to the board, and according to board policy 652, and share to get approval of depositories. The investment depositories currently are Cooley Bank, the State of Wisconsin Local Government Investment Pool, also known as LGIP, Associated Trust Company, and the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, also known as WISC. So the recommendation is to keep the, these designated depositories for the 2223 school year, or this upcoming year.
So then I would entertain a motion to designate Cooley Bank, LGIP, Associated Trust Company, and WISC as the district's official investment depositories, and Cooley Bank as the checking depository.
So moved.
Jennifer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Lots of motions tonight. The next thing is the designation of the official newspaper. Dr. Mueller.
Yes, so, beginning in 2019, 20, the district has designated the Lacrosse Tribune as our official newspaper for the district. It's a daily newspaper, which allows for timely publishing of district information. The newspaper also has great circulation, that it reaches our, through our local courier also. So we would like for the board, the recommendation is to, for the cost being an average of $500 per month for our publication of our board minutes, to continue with the Lacrosse Tribune as the official newspaper for the school district of Holman.
So I would entertain a motion to approve designating the Lacrosse Tribune as the official newspaper for the school district.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris, any discussion or questions on that? Okay, a motion's been made and seconded approving the Lacrosse Tribune as the official newspaper for the school district. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. So, next item is WIAA Association Membership. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, each year, the school board needs to renew the membership with the WIAA in order for the district athletic teams to be eligible for state-sponsored tournaments and to meet the qualification of the leagues the district participates in. The WIAA waived fee requirements starting in 1516 all the way through 2021. Last year, 2122, due to COVID and other reasons, we had a small fee. We are anticipating for the 2223 school year that the WIAA fees will be waived again. So the recommendation is that the district continues with participation with their membership with WIAA.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the district's 2022, 2023 WIAA membership.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving our membership to WIAA, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Wisconsin Association of School Board membership.
So each year, the school board must determine whether to renew its membership with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The purpose of this organization is to aid and assist public school boards and public school agencies of the state of Wisconsin in performing their lawful functions by meetings, sorry, just got there, communication dissemination of information and providing other services to public boards. The membership calls for a flat membership fee. This allows also for professional development to occur for our school board members, which is part of our operations, operational goals for the board. The exact membership amount dues are not yet determined, but figure it will be comparable to previous years anticipating about $10,000 for the full year for all board members. So it is recommended that the school district Holman approves the affiliation with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards for the 2223 school year.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the district's 2022, 2023 WASBE membership as presented.
So moved.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Then designation of WASBE representative. Currently, Chris Lau is serving in that role. I know Jennifer Deek has expressed an interest in doing so. The representative's primary responsibility is to attend the convention in January and attend the delegate assembly where they discuss issues that come before the School Board Association, and then, as an association, vote on the preference as a group of how we want the association to approach items in the coming year, so. So having said that, I would entertain a motion to appoint someone as the WASBE representative.
I can nominate Jennifer Deek.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to appoint Jennifer Deek as the 2022, 2023 WASBE representative. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Then designation of CISA 4 representative. Dr. Mueller.
So each year, the school board must identify a board member who will be the official contact and voting member of our CISA, which is our cooperative educational agency in our area. There is an annual, the annual meeting or annual convention will be held on June 1st at 6:30, and you would be our voting member for representing the school district of Holman. So with that.
I would also say that we do, at our last meeting, I think, in board agenda, we talk about services that we receive and work with the CISA as well, but this is an opportunity to bring all of, representation from all of the CISA schools together, and again, they report out and share information about CISA. Now, I know that Brian Wopat was last year's representative. I understand Barb Wench has expressed an interest in doing that. Having said that, I would entertain a motion to appoint the 2022, 2023 CISA 4 representative.
I nominate Wench.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to appoint Barb Wench as a CISA 4 representative for this upcoming year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Then, the next item is designated designation of school board meeting dates and times. Dr. Mueller.
So, we have a district policy on school board meetings and when they occur, and since 2001, 2002 school year, the school board has been meeting on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, and they meet at 7 o'clock on those Mondays. So the board calendar for the upcoming year here, starting in May, because we go, May to the end of April, we would meet the second and fourth Monday. The only difference, or December, we would only have one meeting on December 12th due to the Christmas, or the holiday, winter holiday there. And then, the second meeting in April would not be on Monday, it'd be on Tuesday, April 11th, due to no school day on that Monday, April 10th. Otherwise, for the next year, upcoming year, it would be the second and fourth Monday at 7 o'clock.
Okay, any questions about that? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2023, 2022, 23 board meeting calendar as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. So moving on to the next item is public participation, but I don't have any cards on that, so we will move on to district administrators' report. Dr. Mueller.
Well, first, I just want to take a moment to welcome Barb Wench and Alan Fox and Rebecca as an incumbent on to the board, and just thank you for your beginning of your service, and look forward to working with you the upcoming year. Also, letter of intent signing day, Holman High School recognized five student athletes that signed letters of intent this past week, and I just want to say congratulations to Ellie Klein, she'll be going to Mankato State, Parker Cradaville going to University of Wisconsin Lacrosse for wrestling, and Gage Pusso for soccer at Edgewood College, Xavier Palmer going to Bethany Lutheran for baseball, and Hayden Goodell, Goodell, sorry, going to Kirkwood Community College for baseball, and just a few more of our students. We also, you know, people are like, what about signings for academics? We do have an upcoming event, a whole evening event on, was it Wednesday, May 25th, or 26th, whatever, that Wednesday is that week, sorry. We will be having an evening full of, for recognizing students for academics and local scholarships and so forth, so. And one last celebration I'd like to share this night is Jason Lulaf, he was named the Lacrosse Tribune's Coach of the Year in wrestling for the fifth time. Outstanding accomplishment, and we just want to thank him for his guidance and for all he does for our youth and for the community. He always takes time and puts his heart and soul into everything and gives, gives and gives to Holman community and our school district, so we thank him for that. So congratulations, Mr. Lulaf.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Mueller? Then moving on to recognition and thank you. Dr. Mueller, Staff Appreciation Week.
Yeah, so, want to take time tonight to recognize all of our district employees who dedicate their time and energy. I tell you, it's not just the usual time and energy, the amount of hours that have been going in by our staff, day in, in the mornings, nights, evenings, to make sure our students are safe and are learning and growing these days. So just take time and show your appreciation for all of our staff the week of May 3rd through 7th. I tell you, just a small note, or just a thank you as you're passing by means a lot to our staff, so, please, I encourage people to take time to do that. And then I'd also like to just, I'd like to thank our Lacrosse Area Autism Foundation. They recently donated over $5,000, $5,500 to our school district to help support students with autism. We are so thankful for that generosity, so, thank you.
And I think Staff Appreciation Week is on tonight's agenda, consent agenda, if we're not, so, yes, so that will be part of the consent agenda. Awesome. So then, moving on to reports and discussions, we will start with Dan on the school bus bids.
Hello.
Yes, please do, yes.
We recently closed the bidding process for the 2223 school year for two school buses coming in. We had two bids come back, and we're recommending one of those bids. There was approximately $200, $239,000 for two brand new 77-passenger propane school buses. That is the, one of the two bids we took, this one is slightly higher than the first one. We decided on this bid because it's the Bluebird, the same model we have been purchasing. We have all the parts in stock that the mechanics use to maintain it, we know how to work on it. The heaters work very well on them, we've heard, read some bad things about the other bus we were looking at, and it comes with adjustable pedals and light checks, things that make the driver's job a little bit easier, so that's why we chose the Bluebird as the bus company would like to go with.
Okay, and that is on this evening's agenda, I believe, so, so, yes, so any questions for him at this time? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then Employee Handbook Language. Melissa Kates.
Good evening. Okay, so I have a few different pieces of language to go through tonight, starting with vacation. Let me find it up here. Maybe. Here, the mouse isn't working.
If you double-click it, it wakes it up.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so as in the past, this language has gone to the employee relations team, and we've made some changes based on their recommendations. We also went to personal governance last week, and now coming to the board. All of this language, if approved, would go into effect in the handbook on July 1st. We do a bulk one-time change, so staff aren't having to constantly go through and look for changes that are made, so. The first piece of language tonight is paid vacation. This falls under Part 3, this is for our hourly staff. This language would make a change to an increase in the amount of vacation that is initially allocated as staff are hired. A few years ago, we added some language that allowed them, allowed staff to, when they were hired, if they had more than five days that we allocate, up to 10, they would receive the 10 days. We found, it was probably 50/50 that that was utilized, but as we went through our workforce study more this year and did some comparisons with other school districts, we found that we were lagging in that initial allocation of vacation. So you will see changes to increase vacation, and as well, at the very end, removing that language, that vacation credited language, because we won't need that anymore since we're aligning with what the 10 days are coming in from the onset, so.
Melissa, did some of that come out of the meeting we had last October?
Yes, yep, yeah, so the vacation, quite a, I think a few of these are part of that meeting that we, that board workshop that we had with staff, so.
I just wanted to note that, thank you.
Yes. All right, any questions on this piece? All right. Next one is loyalty date. This is also for hourly staff. So currently, hourly staff who have worked in the district for 17 years receive an additional leave date. This to, again, acknowledge their service in the district and provide additional leave time, bumping that up to after their 15th year, so, just getting it a little bit sooner. Over/underpayment of wages. So this language you'll see, I've recommended adding it in Part 3 for hourly and Part 5 for administrators and directors. It is already in the teacher section of the handbook. So what this language states is that if there is an overpayment of wages, that we will verify and correct that, just based on different fiscal years, current contract years, underpayment, correcting that as well. So the language is only in the teacher section, and we acknowledge that we need to have it for all employees, language for all employees in the handbook. And this really, for the purpose of when we do payroll audits, sometimes we do find errors, and we need to correct those, so.
I have, I have a question. So throughout these documents, when I was reviewing them, when you're referring to directors, is it executive directors and directors, or is it just directors?
Just directors. Executive directors fall under the administrative umbrella.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification. We probably make it less confusing.
Yeah, executive director is kind of a newer term.
Yeah, it's a newer term, so. It used to be administrators and supervisors, and then we changed supervisors to directors, and what were directors to executive directors.
Okay.
So this next one is under Part 5. This is administrators and directors. This is really not a change in language, but a change, well, it's a change in the language to acknowledge the practice that we actually utilize. So this talks about a tax-heltered annuity benefit that the staff have, and instead of it being monthly, which was currently in the language, it is actually per paycheck, so just correcting to our actual process. So this language, CPR first aid and AED training, this falls under Part 1, this is applicable to all of our staff members. So with this language, we've made a couple different changes. First, changes in classifications of staff who will be required to be CPR certified. Currently, the language states health aides, special education assistance, and educational assistance. I have struck the detailed and just classified as all educational assistance. So we do have other EAs who perhaps work in the library, other areas, so just acknowledging that we probably should have all of our EAs CPR certified, so changing that. And then removing the 12-month main office building secretary, which is an old terminology anyways, but also expanding that to all administrative assistants. So in our main offices, in our buildings, we have more than just 12-month administrative assistants, some of them are only school year, so this change will require all administrative assistants to be CPR certified. They will have a timeframe to get this done, it's not going to be required on July 1st. And then the other change is adequacy in, or equity, I'm sorry, in how much people are paid when they attend this training. So if you're on this list, we pay you to attend the CPR training. For hourly staff right now, they're paid at their hourly rate of pay, teachers are paid at $18 an hour, so we have quite a variety of pay rates that we have under a pay code of CPR. So changing it, since they're all getting the same training, to all be paid the same amount to attend it, so $18 per hour is the recommendation for that. This next one, this is Part 2, thank you to Ms. Mason for helping with the work on this and advancing this for staff that she oversees. This is a great change, acknowledging that we do have more than just our teachers who have national boards. We have our school psychs, our counselors, speech-language paths, and occupational therapists. So this will provide those staff, if they are national board certified, that extra $2,000 stipend per year. This would be on their contract for the 2223 school year, if they are currently certified, and I will send notice out to all of those staff to get that information from them, to make sure their contracts are correct for next year, so.
Before you move on on that, I know a while ago, we heard that Holman was one of the only schools in the area. in the area that paid this ongoing, ongoing, that some will give it upfront when they receive their certification. Do you know if that's still the case, that we?
That I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Do you recall Jill?
You don't.
Yeah, I don't remember digging that deep.
Yeah, it might be good to know comparatively how we are with other schools. Because I also know that we are a district that has a high number of nationally board certified staff. I know that, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Extra duty pay. So this language applies to, it's in the teacher and the hourly sections of the handbook. It really is for compensation for staff who work at our events. So currently, we pay on a stipend basis. Again, as part of our workforce study, we did a lot of comparisons with our local MVC plus 3 school districts and found that we're kind of an anomaly paying a stipend based on the number of hours you work in events. Everyone else usually pays an hourly rate of pay. So, went through and did some math with what other districts are paying, tried to figure that out based on what we currently have as a rate, and have come forward with some recommendations to change. So, all of these in this top section, with the exception of the event manager, would be changed to $13 per hour. Event manager, because of the difference in responsibilities, would bump up to the $15 per hour and fall into this other section that we have with clock, timer, those types of positions. Also, just changing press box PA to public announcer, and then adding camera video and statistician. Those are currently not in the listings in our handbook. So, but they are positions that we do compensate for at our events. So making sure those are included as compensatory positions, so.
And you said you compared this to other area districts?
Correct.
What would it cost us if we just had everybody at $15 an hour? I mean, that just, the $13 an hour chaperone, crowd control, that sometimes can be some of the hardest work, even though, I'm just curious. Could you share those with us, the rates of the other districts?
The rates of the other district, or how much it would cost extra?
And yeah, and what it might cost to increase them all.
Yeah, the other districts do have differences as well, similar, very similar. They align very much with these. I, also with some of the other districts, some pay hourly a minimum wage, so $7.50 versus teachers receiving the $13 or $14 per hour, so.
It'd be nice to see that. Thank you, Melissa. Am I the only one that wants to see that? Do you want to see that? Okay.
All right. Personal leave. So this actually falls under Part 1, but we kind of lump everyone into this language. So, this language specifically applies under the administrator language. This is just a title correction here. But we do have two administrators who have a 215-day contract versus a full year-round contract. And just acknowledging that they really, since they don't have vacation time, acknowledging that they should have carryover of their personal leave if they do not utilize it. Similar to, teachers are able to carry over leave time and hourly staff who do not have vacation as well can carry over. So, putting a limit of up to five days that they can carry over. So, the last piece of language I have is the educational lane adjustments. I will state that this is an exception. This has not gone to ERT or personnel and governance because it was a last-minute change that I knew we needed to make and I forgot to include that on our first reviews. But I, I don't see that we would have any qualms from those groups with this language. So, last, two years ago, we made some changes to only allow one lane movement per contract year for our educators. However, as we're going through, we're seeing that if someone's at a BA 20-plus now, the next lane is BA 30, and then it's MA 0. But if they're going for their master's degree, they really should just jump to masters plus 0 instead of having to go to BA 30 and then wait a whole nother year to go to masters plus 0. So, writing this language, adding this to ensure that those who are going for and earning their master's degree aren't having to wait two years once they've earned that to make that move, so. And that's all I have.
So these items will be on the consent agenda next, at the next meeting. And so, we have time to ask any questions or share any additional input, anything? Okay, I don't see anything. All right, wonderful. Then, I am moving on to the plan regarding adjusting the longevity steps of experienced Holman educators. Melissa.
All right, so I will read through a statement that we have prepared on the administrative team. So this is in response to the resolution that was made by the Board of Education on Monday, March 28th, stating that administration shall adjust the longevity steps of experienced Holman educators. Educators will be placed on their step according to Employee Handbook Language for eligibility and in accordance with the stipulations of the resolution for a July 1, 2022 implementation date. Administration has developed the following plan to implement this resolution. Human resources will work with every individual educator to verify their years of service in Holman. A notice of step placement to each educator will be completed by June 1, 2022. Human resources and business services will update all verified new steps for each impacted educator in Skyward effective July 1, 2022. Retroactive pay will not occur. A new step placement will be used as their beginning 2022-23 placement prior to any changes resulting from the current base wage negotiations or supplemental pay determination.
So any questions? Yeah, I guess, so we were, we had mentioned in our resolution that the step placement could take place across two years? Is this stating that it will all be done in one?
It will be done in one. We will make all step movement effective July 1, 2022.
That's how I thought it read. Okay.
I do have one quick question. In terms of clarifying the years of service, how will that be defined?
So we have run a report of every single teacher. We've pulled their hire date and we're also going through and individually looking at every teacher to see if they've had a leave of absence and didn't earn a year of service that year, because that would not apply in this situation. Just any different situations that may not allow them a step movement for that year, if there were any planned programs for improvement and didn't allow any step movement, that would not provide them a step in this scenario. So we'll go through and within the letter, everyone will receive all of that information. Here's where you started, here's where your current step is, here's what we're going to give you, here's where you'll be July 1st, here's why you maybe didn't get a year in there, so.
Do employees who typically work part-time, do they get, would they get a step?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Are you going to send out all the letters on one day?
Oh, geez.
300?
I'm, I'm just, I'm not thinking about that right now.
So, I, I think, so.
It's 300 and, what's the number of educators?
350-something, I think, with our part times.
So I'll just say, I want to thank them for their time in going through this and to watch for, you know, Ms. Kates will send an email to all the educators tomorrow explaining the timeline and that. But to be patient, because it is, take time to look through every individual employee to make that determination. So it does take some time. But, I mean, those, be able to see the timeline in that and it will be shared with them tomorrow. Yes.
Yeah, just making sure that the language in our letter is clear as well, because as you know, our schedule starts on Step 3, but really, that's your 1. So it's, it, it can be very confusing when you start to get into the depths of some of the staff, so.
Well, and that's why I asked that, because I can only imagine your inbox if you send it out on one day. And so, Crystal and Melissa and Julie and Dr. Mueller, I just hope you know that the board, how much we appreciate the work and the effort that you're putting into this to see that this is done and appropriately, and we know that you are. So thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Okay, then, field placement, or field experience contracts. Oh, hello Jill, not Kim.
No. It's actually me, because these are for our nurse, the nursing students. All right, so this is pretty short. We have students from Winona State that come here, nursing students from Winona State that come here to do their clinical work. This is just an MOU with Winona State to say that we are allowing them to come here and do their clinical work. If we do this, this MOU remains in effect through 2027, so we don't have to come back every year and renew it. But it's been really helpful. We have partnerships with other local universities and colleges to help their students also learn and grow. So this is Winona State's time for us to come here and ask if that's okay.
And I believe, is that on the?
Nope, it's on next time.
Yeah, next time, next time. Okay, so any questions? All right, thank you very much. Then we will move on to the consent agenda and we have nine items this evening on the consent agenda. If there are any that you feel you want to have pulled separately and considered, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Then we will move on to the board debrief and I will call on board members and ask that you present any comments or committee reports that you might have. And I know I will hold our two newer people for, toward the end, so I will start with Jennifer.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to start off by having a warm welcome for Barb and for Alan. Welcome to the board and I look forward to serving with you. I also wanted to congratulate those five student athletes for signing letters of intent on April 20th, so they can continue their academic and athletic journey after Holman High School. And I want to say a thank you, I guess for the, thank you for all, to all the staff. I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to you, especially with Staff Appreciation Week coming up. So you do a ton of stuff for the students on a daily basis and you're very much appreciated. And lastly, I want to mention and say thanks to the La Crosse area Autism Foundation for their donation.
Okay, thank you. Gary Dunlap.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone that works for the school district at Holman as well. It's been a rough couple of years, I gotta admit. Everybody come through it pretty, pretty well. Let's congratulate Barb and Alan being part of the school board and obviously they want to get the best training they can possibly get, so that's why I'm sitting in between them. Or maybe they want to learn how not to do it again. We've got a really good board together right now. If you noticed that, there's always comments about putting parents on the board. Well, they're, we're all parents and grandparents, so that's good. And we're all professional, public servants in one way or another. So I think we have a pretty good board together and hopefully we can keep teaching the truth and speaking the truth and keep moving forward, make the district better every day.
Thank you, Gary. Chris Lau.
Sure. Again, welcome Barb and Alan. Look forward to working with you guys. Policy and government updates. Melissa basically covered everything we talked about in our meeting last week, Wednesday. And more succinct than we did. And then we are on hiatus until, I think, our meeting's in September. So we won't have any updates on anything in policy and governance related until September. Yeah, just a huge thank you to the staff in the district. The district would not run without them. They put their hearts and souls into teaching our kids. Huge thank you. It's not just a week, it's a whole year thing, so very much appreciated.
Thank you. Brian Wolpat.
Welcome to Barb and Alan, to the board. Great to sit next to you. Evergreen Elementary School is having a fundraiser up until this Friday where you can drop off your unused, your used tennis shoes in the main office, anything with rubber soles. And there is a company that, that will buy them from them to recycle them and the fund, the funds that they raise will go towards their new playground. Staff Appreciation Week is coming up and I know there are some of you out there that are counting the days down to the end of the year. I'm not going to call you out by name, but it is coming quickly. So hang in there and, and it's true, like you guys are doing a fantastic job and this year has been extremely challenging. And, and we do, we appreciate everything you do and that you show up every day for the students in this district. And just a reminder to our community that every Friday, Kid Talk drops. And that these little short videos that Mr. Doudal has been putting together and he's doing an incredible job. And I got the chance to listen to an experience that he participated in last week, I believe, where he, he followed a group of high schoolers on a camping trip. A very windy camping and then rain in addition. So, thank you for doing this great job, because a lot of the times what happens is there's, there's so much that goes on within the four walls of our schools and those within the community don't get to see it. And you are bringing that to light to our community members, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Barb Went.
Well, I echo what everyone has said about Staff Appreciation Week coming up. One week is not enough to show our appreciation for what our staff has done for our district. Thank you for the warm welcome, by the way. The one thing that I didn't hear mentioned, congratulations to our 6th, 8th graders that have qualified for Nationals with their National History Day projects. A lot of work went into those, so I just thought we needed to congratulate them as well.
Thank you. And then Alan Fox.
I'd just like to, again, thanks to everyone for the warm welcome. I look forward to serving with you all. Spring sports are coming up, obviously, starting and with the weather kind of interrupting it, hopefully they'll be able to not have to cancel so many games. Field soccer is starting off good. They've only got one loss and, you know, hopefully they can keep only one loss. I think they can do it. Softball, they've been doing good. Lost a few games, but, you know, they've been playing really well and, you know, hopefully they can keep that up. I know baseball had a game today. I don't know how that went, because I was over at the high school, but hopefully good. I know boys tennis hasn't had the greatest start, but I know they can turn around. I know a lot of the boys on that team, they're really good. Track's been working really hard, going to a lot of meets, got a lot of people placing high and I know they're out there every day, basically, or if it's raining, they're inside running. I know a lot of them doing that. But more on the academic side too, our freshmen and sophomores just finished with their ACT prep. Know that's hard and it's going to be a hard road ahead of them, but hopefully they can get through it and when that's done, it's going to become a lot easier for them. AP tests are coming up in May, a lot of them, so good luck to all the AP students on those. Not excited for those. I know our DECA team is competing in Nationals down at Atlanta, Georgia. Good luck to all of them. I don't think they've competed yet, but good luck when they do. And then special thank you to, not thank you, congratulations, to Jake Anderson with Skills USA. He competed in automotive, I can't remember, but it was a lot with motor stuff and it's, it's advanced and he placed first and it was amazing. And I know we've got solo ensemble this weekend, State. We've got a lot of students working in that, so good luck to all of them. They're really good playing. And then a thank you to all the teachers. I know a lot of the kids in the school love our teachers. Like we have some amazing teachers and educators and educational assistants in the school district and I don't know where I'd be, let alone a lot of other students, to be without them. So, yeah, thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Alan. Well, I also want to welcome you, Alan and Barb, to the board. It will be a pleasure working with you this next upcoming year. And congratulations to Jason Louf. We've known that he's a quality staff member for many years. It's nice to see him being recognized outside of the district. Staff appreciation, I think it's been said, you know, we have, I, I've often said, the best staff, education staff in the county. I firmly believe that. And as Dr. Mueller said, it's those small tokens of appreciation, just saying thank you to them or nodding at them or smiling when you see them and, and telling them how much you appreciate what they do, that they do really appreciate that. I've heard that from others, so I just wanted to, to mention that. I would note that related to my opening comments, that Dr. Mueller and I actually have been talking about having a district workshop this summer to address some of the things, some of the board norms and those sorts of things. So I look forward to doing that as a board and we can have some good conversations. I would say to the board, I'm grateful for the reelection as president and your confidence in me in doing that and I look forward, again, working with you. Committees, our SALT committee will be meeting one more time, but I would just note for the new members, we usually meet in May and then reorganize and meet again in the fall. We usually don't meet over the summer with those board committees. And so, midsummer, I'll be asking you for your interest in what committee you would like. And so, midsummer, I'll be asking you for your interests in what committee you would like to, to be serving in, and that sort of thing. And don't be afraid to shake it up if you've been in a committee a couple of years and want to try a different one. Certainly, you can do that. And for the new board members, if you have any questions about what the committee work is and that sort of thing. I know Barb is going through an intensive orientation process, so she'll hear a lot about that kind of stuff through that. And Alan, if you have any questions, it would be great. A lot of times, I know our student on, on board has served on the Student Achievement and Learning Committee, because it's about the academic side of things. But there are other committees, too, that depending on your schedule. I know we don't always get good attendance from students because of the timing of that meeting. But something to think about for the future. So, unless there is anything else to come before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. He likes to do that, Alan.
Who the hell like that?